Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Here.
Merrinka.
Here.
Nordhuck.
Here.
Steenstra. Truust. Vanderwal.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Sines from the Granville Genesee Congregational Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. Then follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Please pray with me. Almighty and triune God, we give you thanks and praise for all of your incredible works. You truly are a loving, good, and gracious God. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you that you made us in your image to exist in community with other people. Lord God, St. Paul said, "I agree then, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness." We thank you for our beautiful city, Lord, that you have blessed us with. Thank you for our officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and all the individuals that make our city the great place that it is. Lord, as we begin to work this evening in a spirit of stewardship, we ask that you bless our council members with wisdom and a strong sense of unity and cooperation. Give them peace in their lives, Lord, and bless our mayor as he leads and guides us all in this city. And, Lord, we also ask for a blessing of care and safety for all of those who protect us, our police department, fire department, our first responders, and all of our public workers. Shield them as they shield us and shower them with your peace also. And may the work that all of these wonderful people do here tonight be pleasing to you. And we pray this in the most precious name of your Son, our Lord Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ken, Pastor, thanks for being with us tonight.
Well, thanks for having me. Yep, the weather was a little goofy. It messed up my hair, but he lent me some of his hairspray.
Otherwise, I'd have an umbrella if you need that. We had a couple late notices from a couple council members. Both councilmembers Steenstra and Truust have asked to be excused. So is there a motion to excuse Jim Steenstra tonight?
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. And also, a message from councilmember Truust, who is also unable to be here tonight. Is there a motion to excuse Paul?
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We also have before us the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve that agenda?
Support.
Motion and support by JR. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, only a week ago, May 13. You've had a chance to look at those. Pretty extensive. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting of March, or I'm sorry, May 13?
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion, additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Presentation of bills. It's only been a week, Ken, but we're already over 541,000. What happened all last week?
I usually tell you guys that in three weeks it's going to get bigger.
Right.
Not one week. You expect smaller than that, don't you?
Anything you'd like to point out to us before we open up?
I certainly would. There's several large bills and just three of them. I total about 300,000 out of the total. Our annual or monthly health insurance bill from Mesa, about 120,000. 160,000 for Int-Out, which is an extensive amount of concrete work, sidewalk and curbs. I know a lot of that's related to the fact that we approved the street overlays and Public Works has our cement contractor go out prior to the street work there to get the curbs that need to be repaired in shape. So that's, I think, a big chunk of that. 67,000 to Moore and Bruges Inc. over a variety of projects. Ivan Rest Water Main, which is under construction now, Canova Plan for next year, and then three other 2025 water main projects. And then there's some miscellaneous ones in there. The $37,000 bill for IT services. $10,000 was related to the installation of the Musical Garden out in the downtown area through the DDA and funded partially by donations. And then 56,000 from Plumbers Environmental for work both in the water system and the Clean Water Plant. So the number of invoices wasn't that large, but the amount was large. So it's pretty evenly split between General Fund Streets and Clean Water Plant with the Water Department bringing up the rear there. But if there's questions, we'd be happy to try to answer those.
Great. Questions for Ken on any of the bills tonight? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of 541,234.97?
Support.
Motion by JR, support by Randy? Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merrinka.
Yes.
Nordhuck.
Yes.
Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Time for public comment. Anybody here like to address the council on any matter? Please just line up for the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about. I've got a few guests. Mitch?
Welcome.
I'd like to go first.
Well, somebody has to.
Well, good evening. Mitch Leachman, I live at 3963 Basswood Drive. And in contrast to typically when I'm here, I'm actually going to represent the Environmental Sustainability Committee tonight by giving you just some updates, just a few little commentaries about how things have been going. You may know that we did pursue garlic mustard again this year at Millraise Park, supported by the Public Works Department. That was back the 4th of May. Managed to gather nearly 200 pounds of the stuff, at least that's my best guess. And who knows how much more we'd have gotten if you would come out?
I know. I missed it. And it is kind of fun, too. I do enjoy that.
Just saying. As it happens, for anybody who's interested in the subject or curious about it, it turns out that you might actually get lucky with Morelles if you go hunting for garlic mustard. I personally found, well, I found one, I found two. So just saying, you never know. Second is just a quick comment about our spring speaker series, Gardening for Wildlife Spring Speaker Series, first ever of that sort of thing here in Granville. Tremendous support from the library where it's being hosted. Many thanks to them. Thanks to city staff, Marcy especially, for helping promote it within the website, social media, and so on. We feel pretty good about it. You know, again, it's relatively small attendance, but you know, it's the first for this sort of thing. And the committee did meet our regular meeting, our monthly meeting, last week. And I'm optimistic that we will continue to do this sort of thing. You know, not necessarily the same exact programs, might be different times of the year, but I think the committee is very interested in doing this sort of stuff. So we have one left Wednesday night. So if you're not going to the Parks and Rec Board Meeting, maybe you want to go to the library Wednesday night and learn about gardening for pollinators, the Habitat Hero Program that John Ball Zoo has. And rumor has that they actually have free plants as well. So, you know, hey, you never know. So the last thing I would share with you all, some of you may already know, involves a handout. I brought enough for you got one. I think you already have one, so just in case there's. I brought enough for the entire board, extras. So I also already sent this to Marcy. It's been on the Facebook page for the Environmental Sustainability Committee for a while. And we have a wonderful partner network that we've built through the Growing a Greener Granville Initiative. And this is our native plant sale and expo on the 1st of June, Saturday. It will be under the pavilion, Farmers Market Pavilion. Many thanks to Teresa for all of her support with this event. And as excited as I could inspire you all to be about native plants and the vendors and the eco crafters and the organizations that are going to be there, I would just leave you with one word, and that's, well, hyphenated word, mini donuts. I mean, if you're available, come and out for donuts. Ali's Donuts is our food truck for that day. That is also a Teresa inspiration that I got through the Farmers Markets dates for the year. Why not have a food truck? So that's it. That's all I wanted to say. I mean, questions or comments, but.
Great. Thank you. Glad you're in the city, working hard. We appreciate it. Thanks, Mitch. Anybody else like to address the council? Now's your chance. Come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, tell us what you're thinking about. Carolyn, nothing tonight? Last call. Okay. Next item on the agenda under ordinances and resolutions is resolution. And that is, first one is about truth and taxation. So Charlie did a memo on that. And Ken, Jane, anything you'd like to add to that?
You know, just in general summary, because you've got quite a bit of information. This is something that, you know, the council addresses every year at the time of budget adoption. Based on the state law, even if the city does not raise the millage rate, you still have to do a calculation and determine whether the previous millage rate, plus the additions and subtractions to the tax rule, generates more revenue. And if you do, you have to disclose that as an additional revenue, I'm sorry, an additional millage rate, even if the rate itself has not changed. And so we typically do that, most years we have to do that. I think every now and then we'll have a year that there's enough losses that it is not necessary. But typically, we do. This year, because the city budget proposes a millage increase for the purpose of dedicating additional investment to our city streets, it's a bigger number than we've seen typically. Often, it's a fraction. It's a, you know, .4, .6, or .2 mill kind of situation. In this case, that number is 2.0713, to be exact, as calculated by our city assessor. And that includes the additional millage that we're actually levying above last year's millage rate. And it also includes all those additions and subtractions, which were a net addition this year. The development on Ivan Rest and the Alderwood Platte, apartments down on Ivan Rest Avenue, and various projects here and there have created additional growth for the city. So this is the resolution that precedes the budget adoption. By adopting it, you are declaring that that is the additional millage rate to be levied. And then that will make accurate the budget that we're going to follow up with a subsequent approval on that's based on that number. If council were to fail to approve this resolution, it would reduce the revenue provided by the millage, and that would have an effect on the budget. So that's step one of the process.
So it's really a good thing that there's an addition, right? That means that there's been additions to the tax base beyond just the regular rate of inflation on.
Yeah. All those things, the property sales that uncapped tax rates, those kinds of things. I think generally, it's a sign of health for the community.
Well, I thought the memo by Charlie was really good, so he's not here tonight, but I've been telling him, good memo. Shows that our maximum allowable millage rate is like 17 and, you know, 17 and a half. So we're not even close to that.
Right.
We're well below our charter limitation. Ken? Any questions for Ken or Jane or anybody else about the truth and taxation calculation? Marcy, what would this resolution number be?
3346.
Is there a motion to approve resolution, 3346, a resolution to approve the levy of an additional millage rate?
Support.
Motion support. Any other discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhuck.
Yes.
Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinka.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item is a resolution to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2024 to 2025 budget. So we've talked about that budget a lot. Jane, thank you for getting us very prepped for that. Department heads, thank you for working. I don't know, you probably start before the first of the year, working on this. Yeah. Yeah. We've had the public hearing last week. You've made yourself available for questions, so we appreciate that. You and Ken and everybody else are always available for our questions. Appreciate that. Marcy, what would the resolution number be to adopt the budget?
3347.
3347. Yes. Right after 3346. Yeah.
Just typically, you know, this is following, in this case, one week following the public hearing. But we would typically identify to the council anything that's changed since the budget public hearing. In this case, you've had two budget work sessions, and the last numbers you saw in detail would have been at the second budget work session. There is a change to the budget tonight from what was discussed at the second budget work session, and it's with regard to the DDA. We included the minutes from the last DDA Board Meeting in there, and I mentioned in the memo to council that there's still work to be done there. There's a few line items that have increased, and we just need a little bit more time to sit down. I'd like to bring Joel Bowers here, the Chair of the DDA, Teresa as the Director, and then our staff that worked in that area, the budget, obviously our Finance Director and DPW Director, and have an opportunity to work through those numbers. So for tonight's budget purposes, for the, I think, three or four line items that were identified, we're going to adopt the budget with last year's numbers in those line items and then give an opportunity for this group conversation to occur. We owe good answers on questions that have been asked and just need a little bit more time to do that. So that's the notable change. Other than that, the budget remains as presented, exactly as it was in the extensive PowerPoint presentation at the last city council meeting.
Great. Thanks for that explanation. Last week at the DDA meeting, there was some good thoughtful discussion, so I appreciate you addressing that, and I think you've met with Joel.
Yes, I did.
A lot, so anyway, appreciate that. Also, just before we entertain a motion, just thank you for your explanation last week, too. I mean, there is, I thought it was you and Jane did a great job of succinctly stating there is a millage increase, but that money is going for roads. I mean, we're not redecorating this room.
Right.
Or doing something like that. It's going to be roads that every citizen's going to be able to enjoy. And like Jane said, that's the first impression when you drive in a city, you notice the roads, so.
We're hopeful. I mean, obviously, with a portion of the millage rate dedicated specifically to that purpose, we can attack it in a more immediately noticeable, I'll say. Immediate's a strange word to use when you're talking about street construction, but we've already approved as a city council this year, street overlays, which will be underway very shortly and completed by the end of June. And it's pushing a million dollars worth of roadwork. So we know the condition. You've seen the numbers. We'd like to bring those numbers up. We'd like to have our residents and businesses enjoy the best roads they can have. So we appreciate council support in trying to accomplish that.
Before we have more discussion, if any, on the budget, is there a motion to approve resolution 3347? That's a resolution to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2024 through 2025.
Support.
Motion and support. Any other discussion, any comments? JR?
So, Ken, just to, if I'm hearing this correctly, the line items we're going to adjust to the budget is to those three items, is go back to the 2324 budgeted numbers, not the 2425 proposed, for now?
For now, yeah. And then we'll work our way through the process, answer questions, determine if those numbers remain accurate or not. And then what's likely to happen is the numbers will change in some way, but it won't be immediately necessary for the council to amend the budget to reflect that. As council knows, we typically look at the budget a couple times a year. The budget does get amended every year. It's a budget. It's not, you know, actual expenditure, it's projected expenditure. But there won't be a need to immediately address whatever those numbers are. At some point, most likely, I would think, I haven't talked to Jane about this, but we typically do our initial look at the budget in December, mid-year for us, six months into the fiscal year. That would be the most likely time to make a change, to actually reflect the outcome of the conversations. And a lot of times, we don't even find that we need to make December budget amendments. We make them in June at the end of the year. So a lot of things happen between now and then. Some line items will be expended to a greater extent than we planned, others to a lesser extent, and these are adopted by fund. So if things even out the right way, it may not even be necessary at all. But for now, I would project that at some point, we'd probably see, no later than the end of the next fiscal year, a budget to reflect that. But the conversation on it is going to proceed right away. We're going to get everybody on the same page, get those questions answered, have agreement on how we're going to implement the budget before July 1.
I know your memo stated that as well, so I just wanted to clarify that it was for the 2324.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions about the budget, proposed budget? Justin?
Yeah, so obviously, I'm going to vote in support of this. But I would like, we had discussed the possibility of doing a resolution stating that the purpose of this increase is for transportation infrastructure. And so I would like to proceed with that resolution, just to provide transparency to the residents, taxpayers, why are we doing what we're doing, and provide clarity moving forward that this, the intent of this is really to address a large need in the city and make sure that we're looking long-term at how we can improve our infrastructure. So I'm happy to help with that, or Marcy does a phenomenal job. So if she wants to do that, that would be wonderful, too. But however that's done, I would really like to see us adopt something.
I agree. I think that's a great idea. Yeah, because this is actually additional money to what we're already committing to.
Yes.
So I think that's important. And so thank you for volunteering for that.
All right. We'll take care of that for the next council meeting.
Perfect. Perfect.
Anybody else have comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and support to adopt the budget. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinka.
Yes.
Nordhuck.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody who spent a lot of time working on that. Especially thank you, department heads, for working hard on it and treating it like it's your own money and being great stewards of it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We only have a couple reports, since it's only been a week. So we have the investment report and also the minutes from the DDA meeting of last week, May 9. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Support. Any comments? All those in favor of approving consent agenda, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great. Ken, city managers' report.
No items that require city council approval tonight. They will just highlight the miscellaneous communication that came from the municipal league regarding legislation in the state that has now gotten through the House Representatives Election Committee. And it's got a ways to go yet, but it's sounding like this is something that's going to occur. And it potentially affects Granville. This has to do with how city quirks, municipal quirks, account for ballots that come in up to six days following an election. Am I saying that right? Okay. And elections therefore become official later. And there are many municipalities, including Granville, whose charter requires that a change in the elected officials on the city council, we make that transition immediately at the next city council meeting. There's not a lame duck period. It doesn't happen on January 1. And that creates a difficulty because potentially, depending on how the calendar falls, we could wind up with an issue of not having an election certified before a city council member or members may need to be seated. So there's more detail, a little bit more detail here, not a lot, but it looks like they're going to try to account for that by a change in the, at the state level that would cover municipalities that have these charter obligations. So just something to be aware of, we don't have an election in 2024, or next time around, until 2025. So we'll see where that goes, but I thought it was interesting, just because we are in that category of municipalities that immediately seats elected officials.
Josh?
Yeah, I was just going to, I was going to mention that, Ken, if you didn't, but actually, Chair of the Municipal Services Committee for the MML.
Oh, okay.
That's looked at this issue, and I did share some feedback with them that that kind of messes us up as far as our charter goes. But it looks like the, because some municipalities actually seat their new electives in January after the 1st of the year, like Grand Rapids, for example. So they're not really affected by this at all. But for those of us that seat immediately, it would potentially, you know, this is just another one of those examples where, as I was mentioning last week when we were talking about the charter, that, you know, it's potentially a state law that kind of supersedes what our charter says. So, you know, is this something that perhaps would make sense to, you know, make a change to at some point, or do we just go with this? Because it, you know, invalidates kind of what's in our charter already. But they're proposing December 1, which potentially impacts one council meeting, which I guess would mean everybody stays in office, like an extra meeting after an election potentially or something, right?
Yeah.
And we maybe would have to have a special meeting to swear people in on December 1.
And that's possible.
Because we don't have, we don't have a city council meeting on that date typically. Unless that would happen, well, we never would, because it's not our second or fourth Monday, so. But I did share some of that feedback. It messes up other communities potentially, too, but it has to do with that certification of elections piece, so it's just interesting how different communities do things differently and if I make some adjustments if that passes.
Anything else?
Nothing else.
All right. Councilmember comments? Randy?
Not much. Just wanted to let the council know that myself and the mayor and Curtis Holt met today, and we started to work on putting together an employment agreement for our, hopefully, new city manager. And we made a lot of progress, few things to work out yet, but we're going, it's going good, going as fast as we can. Thought Ken would want to know that. That's it. And you can add more details if you want. Feel free.
That's great. Thanks. Josh?
Well, I was just going to say, I appreciate Randy and Mayor Mas, you know, being willing to sit down on that, along with Emily and Curtis, working on that. Labor attorney as well, I think, from Varnham, looking at that. So that's great. I was going to mention the legislation, we already talked about that, but just wanted to say thanks to everybody who worked on the budget, you know, in particular Jane and the department heads for all the work that went into that. It's great that we have unanimity up here, you know, in moving forward with that as well. And I think, you know, I appreciated Justin's comments, too, about, you know, doing a resolution. I think that does make some sense to kind of make that public statement to the community about, you know, where this investment's going. You know, the, you know, staff have made a good case that we have, you know, roads in need of repair. We have some bridges as well that are very expensive that need some attention in the next couple of years, and everybody appreciates, you know, well-maintained roads, you know, good pavement, helps improve property values. It is the first impression that people have when they come into our community. So, you know, as was mentioned, it really benefits everybody, and it's important to make sure that we keep up with that infrastructure. So just thanks to everybody for the work on that. And Jane, in particular, for, you know, all the explanation and discussion about all the different things that went into the budget handle last year. You know, we kind of changed some things up with funds and with how we were kind of accounting for things to, you know, put things in different categories.
in different categories and so forth, things went really smoothly this year, and I think it made a lot of sense when we were looking at things, so thank you for all your work on that.
Justin?
Yeah, I would just echo all of that, I certainly don't go into these things hoping to raise the millage rate, and generally, my default is the opposite, but the case was made very overwhelmingly well, and so there was nothing that I could say, I just, I don't agree with this, so I'm glad to see us investing in something that definitely needs investment and has been long neglected in our community, so thank you to the department heads and to Jane for all of the work.
JR? Yeah, just two things, I know tomorrow there is a DDA meet and greet, 8 to 9 a.m., and then 12 to 1, I don't think you have to RSVP per se, but if you want to show up, it's going to be a nice presentation, the last time they did it, it was, where have we been, where are we going, what are some future partners we're looking for, that sort of thing, so if you have interest in that, am I missing anything, highlights, awesome, I know I'll be there, it's always awesome to see what's happening in our downtown corridor, and just wish everybody a safe Memorial Day, and maybe just a pause on why we have Memorial Day, rather than just barbecues and a day off, so something to think about, that's it.
Great, yeah, I don't have anything to add either, other than thank you to all of you for working hard on the budget and being very thoughtful about it, also, Ken, thank you for putting information, the obituary about Jack Bengston, who was longtime, very conscientious planning commission member for many years, and he brought humor to the group as well, so he, condolences to his family, he will definitely be missed, he, I think he visited every site, every time we talked about a project, he went out, walked a site, so very, very conscientious guy, he will be missed. So that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, in the opposition, please say no. Great, thanks everybody for being here, especially our guests.